Thank you very much, David. I thought that was a very nice introduction as opposed to Craig's remarks earlier. He has known me for years.
We play good cop, bad cop.
Yes, it is. First of all, two things for the record, Charlie. Only my mother and the IRS call me Chester.
I knew that.
And when the next time you say, "And Chet became successful," try to take the tone of surprise out of your voice. It's a real honor to be here today. Thank you very much for the invitation. You're going to think that Bob has spent days and days sweating over the synchronization of these talks, but as it happens, it just flows together very nicely from the incredibly knowledgeable and well-thought-out presentation that Bob... I'm in a very intimidating situation here following him. Even his beard is better than mine. So, look, first of all, I hate the term fake news. Technically, there's no such thing, and the term itself is a great example to me of how sloppy our communication skills have become as a society. There's news, and then there's propaganda, rumor, satire, lies, slander, gossip, talk radio, immuendo, hoaxes, unconfirmed reports, opinion, hearsay, commentary, rhetoric, comedy, hyperbole, send-before-midnight infomercials, supermarket tabloid headlines, which is where I get a lot of my news, waiting to check out a headline, political speech and disinformation. It's not news. Oh, and tweets. How could I forget? As a former journalist, I resent how cavalierly those terms have become interchangeable with actual news, which is meticulously produced, double and triple-checked, information critical to our democracy. But I'm obviously old-school. So old-school, in fact, that at my first newspaper job, we were using typewriters just exactly like them. In the back shop, they were still using a thing called a linea type machine, which actually formed every letter in every column of a newspaper from molten hot lead. Oh, she would probably outlaw that. This was a laborious, exacting, and time-consuming process. It took a long time for those words to be created, and it took a creative and hands-on team of clerks, reporters, editors, writers, advertising staff, back-shop mechanics, headline geniuses, press room operators, and delivery drivers to complete that process for each and every edition, each and every 24 hours. It took a lot of effort. But today, a 40-year-old can publish tweets with his thumbs and, unedited, reach his audience seconds later. So, the social media process itself, making it physically so easy to publish anything, has, in a sense, to my mind, sort of mechanically devalued the intrinsic importance of our words. Accountability and responsibility have been lost to convenience. Facebook often has no face. Newspapers and traditional broadcasters have always listed the names and titles of key editorial people. I notice these days even the reporter's bylines come at the end of the story with a phone number or an email where you can contact them. So, you can tell who to call and who's responsible. This is the New York Times leadership. The social media... It also has their picture on it. I don't think I would allow, given my home insecurity back then. The social media, there's often no one you can hold responsible on, so that anonymity, which someone talked about earlier, allows for cowards to operate with impunity. I learned about responsibility when I was a rookie reporter in a small town, and I would cover the city council meeting debate or the police chief's speech to the Rotary Club the night before. And then the next day, we'd all be sitting around the same coffee table, where someone mentioned a coffee shop earlier, at eye to eye across those coffee cups and plates. And I learned pretty quickly how powerful your words can be, the impact even an accidental phrase can have on another person. I was also taught to be precise with facts, that if you got Mrs. Smith's address wrong in the garden club report, then nobody would believe you if you tried to report that the emperor was wearing no clothes. By the way, the emperor is wearing no clothes. That coffee shop... Oh, if you wanted proof of that, I pushed the wrong button. Uh-oh, there he is. So, that coffee shop taught me those important lessons, and I was held accountable for my words in a very human, person-to-person way. These days, that human connection is gone, and everyone gets their coffee to go. So, who's in charge if everyone's in charge? Back in the day, there was no question. Clark Kent and Lois Lane worked for Very White. Mary Tyler Moore worked for Lou Grant. Woodward and Bernstein worked for Ben Bradley. And those irascible, no-nonsense characters were clearly the men, and it was always men, who were singularly in charge and responsible for every headline, every sentence, every comma in every story, and we were damn proud of it. Thank you. Today, the masters of Facebook and Twitter, and whatever is the flavor of the month messaging app, are only barely waking up to that responsibility. In the past, the Facebooks of the world have taken the position that they're only empty accessible chalkboards, that we're just the platform, we're not responsible for what people put on the board. But finally, that's changing, partly, I think, due to the election of Donald Trump and the subsequent nervousness that that's created in some quarters, including the leadership of these social media platforms, and also, not inconsequential, because governments are signaling, "If you don't police your Facebook, we will." A week ago, as Bob made a reference to, the European Union enacted the GDPR. You'll hear that acronym more and more. The GDPR, the General Data Protection Regulation for all European countries, forces online platforms to police their apps for misinformation and potential privacy breaches. The law insists that those, you know, for example, those Terms of Service that go on and on and nobody ever reads them, you have to push the button to continue in the platform, they have to be now written, the legalese documents, brief and clearly, so that everyone can understand. It also allows users, us, to access the personal information that they've collected if you're in Europe, and the law provides ways for that information to be corrected or deleted, and Facebook and Twitter and those have only 30 days flat to get back to you with that information and to make those corrections. And the breach of that can cost you up to $24 million or a cut of your profits, whichever is greater. So, they're not fooling around in Europe. We're playing catch-up. While the core of GDPR addresses personal data, not misinformation or fake news per se, it will have a powerful mitigating effect because it makes it much harder for the bad actors to obtain the personal information about you, that they need to target the audience that they seek to misinform. So, the question becomes for the U.S., without the traditional gatekeepers, is this a job for Congress, or the industry, or state governments, or the FEC, or the platforms themselves? I'm going to suggest a different someone else in a moment. For my money, whatever solution Silicon Valley proposes, it must involve humans. The Mark Zuckerbergs of the world still tend to think that they can algorithm their way out of any problem. There's an app for that, you know, or we can write one. But robots do not make good editors. Humans, for all their faults, are still uniquely qualified to tell a bad joke from a presidential tweet, most of the time. For example, you could teach a robot, or an algorithm, give it to approve only authorized official White House presidential portraits. The algorithm might contain certain rigid rules that it would have to be followed by the robot before you could publish the picture. One, in an official portrait, the president would be wearing formal clothing. Two, the photo would be focused, formally posed, not a snapshot or a selfie. Three, he would be in the frame by himself, facing the camera, facial features in place, not contorted. And then number four, of course, his hair would have to be groomed and neatly combed. So, those are really good strict editorial rules to feed a robot, but given those rules, this could be considered a historic... So, this is not an academic exercise. Fake stories have caused plenty of damage to individuals' reputations, to our economy, to our democratic institutions. They are corrosive, and over time, they eat away at the very foundation of our democracy, a well-informed citizenry, armed with verifiable truths with which to make solid decisions about the future of our government. People have died because of fake news. Fake news like the vicious claptrap from sources like Alex Jones of Infowars, who pushed a totally false story about Hillary Clinton's campaign manager being involved in some satanic child sex trafficking ring at a Washington pizza shop. Now, that sounds ridiculous and outrageous, but the truth is, somebody believed that, and they showed up with a rifle and shot the restaurant up, trying to save the victims that he thought were in the back room. By the way, a number of Sandy Hook parents, just in the last several weeks, have started to sue Infowars guy Alex Jones because he broadcasts stories about how the Sandy Hook massacre was faked. After the Las Vegas massacre, you know, these things are happening so often, you'll have to take a minute to remember the Las Vegas massacre, The Washington Post found that Facebook had posted a story misidentifying the gunman and identifying him as a far-left loon. YouTube posted a conspiracy video on that same incident, claiming there were multiple shooters in Vegas. These were completely false stories. But the automatic selection software that looked at them and allowed them to be published, the algorithms that stand the web at that time, just looked at the sheer number of citations or references, so that the more people passed them on, the more legitimate it looked to the robot, not whether they looked legitimate from a journalistic perspective. A year ago in India, seven people were beaten to death, killed, as a result of online rumors when they went viral. Some of those people were accused of abusing, abducting children, some were accused of selling drugs, some were accused of trading in sacred cows. And in India, none of those accusations were true, but all seven of those folks lost their lives. Russian cyber operatives, of course, notoriously used nearly 500 accounts that seemed to look like Americans, to buy 3,500 Facebook ads during the 2016 presidential election. They were remarkably sophisticated in their voter demographic targeting, and by Facebook's own estimates, as Bob referenced earlier, they may have reached 146 million Americans with those ads and videos that they posted. Special Counsel Robert Mueller, of course, has indicted 13 individual Russians for that memory. Meanwhile, Silicon Valley is scrambling to make up for lost time. Listen to this excerpt from Mark Zuckerberg, an interview in the New York Times Magazine last year, as he describes his hopes for the future of Facebook, and he quote, "Our next focus will be the developing of social infrastructure for community, for supporting us," meaning all of us, "for keeping us safe, for informing us, for civic engagement, and for the inclusion for all," which sounds to me like a really good definition of a responsible 1950s newspaper. A little late in the game, but at least they're waking up. They're hiring thousands of people to help with content review, which what we used to call editors. Roughly, if I was a content reviewer, I would have asked for more money in that job. They're going to roughly double their staff and boost their budget by millions. So, they're seriously investing, and Google and Twitter are doing the same sort of things, devising their own vetting systems for suspicious ads. But they're all struggling with this new responsibility, and if you watch them being interviewed, the people who run these programs, or Zuckerberg himself, they're not comfortable with being in the media business or exercising that difficult and tricky, which has always been difficult and tricky, judgment of editors. And unfortunately, people do believe these fake stories. Pure research found that those 2/3 of Americans, referenced earlier, get at least some of their news from social media. And here's how that works. This is the top fake news stories during the presidential election of 2016. And they're, you know, the first one is, "The Pope Has Endorsed Donald Trump." It's like, oh my God, you know, how could people... But they do, they believe it, they click it, and they share it. And to me, of all the ridiculous headlines there, the really important bars are the blue ones at the bottom. The fake news got a million and a half more clicks and passing ons than the real news did of the same topics during the presidential election. That's where the dangerous part raises its head for our democracy. And a recent study in Science Magazine found that those false stories spread farther and faster than real ones. They're being retreated 70% of the time, and the more outrageous the language, the wider the distribution. Over time, the corrosion of lies and disrespect that this creates takes its toll in our entire society. Here's a Gallup poll from 2016, which shows where our primary American institutions stand, most of which have been criticized or sabotaged by fake news stories, in terms of trust and respect. The dark green is strong support, light green is some support. And you can see that at the top, the military still is in good standing. You work your way down through, and this is before Mr. Trump assumed the presidency, so those numbers are probably a little different. All of those things get weaker and weaker till you get down to the bottom, and Congress has that cherished role of being in single digits. Corrosion across the board. And left unchallenged, here's where hateful tweets lead. They do more than this. You know, they get pretty dangerous. This shirt was a popular item at Donald Trump or political rallies. And of those of you in the back, it says, "Rope tree journalists, some assembly required." Ha, ha, ha. So, who should take on this responsibility? We should. We all should, you and me, and our teachers at the earliest possible levels of our education system. We need to teach and practice media literacy, the art of discerning fake from fact. In a 1952 Supreme Court case, Felix Fratford, noting the central role of public schools in our system of self-government, said, "Teachers should be regarded as, quote, 'the priests of our democracy.'" I think, David, by the way, that makes library directors monseniors at least. It's become everybody's job to think like an editor, starting with their classic question, "Says who? Who said it? Why do they say it? What do they have to gain? What's their history on this issue? Do they represent one political philosophy or another? Is this information backed up by any independent research that's referenced in the story, or is it just opinion disguised as fact? Does it appear on multiple sites, or is it being pushed by one source alone?" By the way, putting it in all capital letters doesn't make it true either. Thank you. The Facebooks of the world may shape the future of our communications, but I believe the answer to the problems of fake news and alternative facts lies in the distant past. I think we need not more artificial intelligence, but more genuine human intelligence and critical thinking skills instilled in our children at the earliest possible time, and a sense of citizen duty. You know, it is a duty. A democracy requires knowledgeable citizens. President Eisenhower's farewell address is often cited regarding the danger of the military-industrial complex, we knew that reference. But that same speech, he said that the best defense against any sector hijacking our democracy is an informed, knowledgeable citizenry. In fact, closer to home, Article 8 of the main Constitution recognizes the importance of teaching civic literacy. This section says that the legislature shall require towns to support public schools, quote, "A general diffusion of the advantages of education being essential to the preservation of the rights and liberties of all the people." Just a few weeks ago, former Secretary of State Rex Tillerson warned that "American democracy was threatened by a growing crisis of ethics and integrity." Quote, "If our leaders seek to conceal the truth, or we as people become accepting of alternative realities that are no longer grounded in facts, then we as American citizens are on a pathway to relinquishing our freedoms." He said that in a commencement speech, and he should know. Democracy is built upon trust, and so is good journalism. Remember this guy, I think is a part-time maester, you may remember, Walter Cronkite. He was a trailhead here during the summer. He was the most trusted man in America, a classic journalist, not the man with the fastest thumbs on his iPhone, not the news reader with the slickest hairdo, obviously. By the way, in the most recent Reader's Digest National Poll of who currently are the most trusted people in America, of the top 10, 7 are in show business. Here's number one. Bob's buddy, Tom Hanks. Alex Trebek, who's number eight, by the way. I should have phrased that like a question. None of the top 10 were journalists or public officials, as I just did. And so, without these social referees, schools, churches, scouting, newspapers, they're all much less of a presence than they used to be. Volunteer fire companies are having trouble filling slots. The Portland Police Department, the Portland PD, is offering a $10,000 signing bonus, trying to get people just to do that simple job, important job. Boy Scouts membership is down, service clubs are in trouble. So, that's the bad news. But I also have some good news. David asked to talk about the impact of fake news, we've done that. Here's something you might be able to do about it. And here's some good news that goes along with it. The New York Times, in the last year, had its best quarter for subscriber growth in history. 348,000-page digital subscribers, more than the previous quarter, for a new total of 3.2 million print and online subscribers. So, that's a heartening reversal of everybody getting all their news on social media. Someone mentioned it earlier in the Q and A, that, you know, that's a good place to look as a traditional newspaper to figure out what's real and what's not. Numbers are also up at The Washington Post, at The Wall Street Journal, CNN, and Fox News, across the board. So, it's not a political thing, and it's a reflection, I think, of this time. It's a positive sign. And also, the New York Times and others in the industry are sort of stepping up in ways they never did. For years, the Times was known as the gray lady because it was so dull in its serious makeup. Now, this is the New York Times for kids. It's, I think it was eight-page, full-color, it leaves me breathless trying to think about how much that costs in the New York Times, just for kids. That was back when I was doing this, unheard of. The Wall Street Journal has a campaign called "The Face of Real News," featuring its correspondents and experts as, you know, human beings you can trust, trying to rebuild that trust. The big old gray lady in New York Times, as it used to be known for all the news it did to print, they're now pushing a new slogan that says, "Support the mission of the New York Times." So, there's a sense of that public service coming back that had possibly was lost. The Washington Post has a new slogan, "Democracy Dies in Darkness," which sounds either ominous or they're trying to sell me flashlight batteries. The Boston Globe's current, one of their slogans, is "Real journalists, real journalism." And the Portland newspapers have their own new journalism you can trust. We need it now more than ever. So, those strategies are designed to regain that trust, combat fake news, and get back to where they belong in terms of respect. But as citizens, what can we do? That's what the industry's doing. What action can we take as individuals? There's a very good set of anti-fake news tools available free online for anyone who wants to join the battle, and I brought with me a sampling this morning. Our own vote in college, for example, has a terrific site that concentrates on this, a very comprehensive guide on how to spot fake news. And you see, it's simple and direct and gets the conversation going pretty well. Journalism support associations like News Media Alliance have developed classroom curricula for young students to teach them how to spot fake news. And I like that, the simplicity of it, that you start, search, subscribe. This is a great fake news headline, "Senator Admits That He Hates Puppies."
Fake senator. All of them.
The Museum in Washington, D.C., which is a wonderful operation, I used to be associated with, has a very innovative website with educational and historical resources, again, that are useful, designed for classroom uses as well. Here's some individual sites you might find good. The Lead Stories dot com is another site that actively pursues fake news, hoaxes, and online pranks, and it has, you know, they're constantly changing all these individual stories as they appear on the web, and they knock them down. I love their slogan, it says, "Just because it's trending doesn't mean it's true." Something Bob made a passing reference to earlier, PolitiFact, and this is, I love their fact-checking. They're in the fact-checking in the world of American politics, which must make them very busy these days, and they have that wonderful thing called a "pants-on-fire" meter, which is, depending on how bad the lie was. But also, the other interesting thing about, that's encouraging about this, that I didn't realize actually until I read this slide myself, is that they also are running ads there. And what that means is that there, somebody has figured out that people are looking at this site enough that the ads are, that's a useful place to put your ad. That means that there's a lot of interest by people, you know, to look at the fake news, anti-fake news places. One of the early ones was called, it is called, Snopes dot com. It was formally established as the, quote, "Urban Legends Reference Pages." That was one of the first fact-checking sites, and as the title suggests, it has a broad portfolio that goes beyond fake news. Factcheck.org is a project of the Annenberg Public Policy Center. Somebody mentioned Kathleen Jameson, who I've worked with earlier. That's her in Pennsylvania. They monitor the factual accuracy of statements, which is different now than just fake news, but the statements by major U.S. political figures in the form of TV ads, debates, speeches, interviews, and news releases. So, they get, even before it becomes fake news, they look at what the politicians are issuing themselves. Fake news itself, very recently, only within the last week or so, I found this has joined the fight. This is a full-page ad, again, that's not a cheap commitment on their part, a full-page ad in The Wall Street Journal, I think it's also, I've seen it in the New York Times, on Facebook's own rules, as helping you or anyone to spot fake news. If you just, you know, ran that off and added it around the classroom to get the conversation going, that's a terrific resource that wouldn't have been there six months ago. So, these are concerning issues, for sure. But remember, we've survived a civil war, several global conflicts, recession, depression, terrorism, and the Jerry Springer Show. We can get through this. As American citizens, we're lucky to have a huge variety of news sources at our fingertips. Please, read more than one. Not only the site that serves you as an echo chamber for your own opinions, and subscribe to as many as you can, giving good journalism financial support. Well, you know, I love that old saw about all that evil has to do is have good men stand by the wayside and not do anything. You know, pitch in, put a little financial support behind it by subscribing. Speaking of financial support, there are signs of some very unusual financial arrangements coming up in the near future. In Canada, they're considering whether they... In Canada, they're considering whether their federal government should support newspapers, something like our Corporation for Public Broadcasting as a public service. The New York Times has named an editor whose job it is every day to seek philanthropic contributions to pay for special news projects, unheard of in my time. The Guardian in England has already started such a system of donated financial support. So, to review, I think the answer to our current fake news problem is a return to good old-fashioned, corny, American values. We all need to get back to the basics, practice mutual respect, reach out to others who care, slow down, think before you tweet, remember, all that Twitter is not gold. I made that up. None of us need to be a professional journalist to do our part, because to a great degree, journalism is the image of our own society, our values and practices. So, here are some suggestions as to what each of us can do about that. Number one, read. Stay current with the issues in the news. Subscribe to responsible newspapers. Number two, read some more. Maintain several sources of news, not just that echo chamber. Write letters to the editor. Reinforce positive values when you see it. Sue the bastards. You know, I don't know why, but we've had a, we used to work in terror at the newspaper, a traditional newspaper, being sued, and that's one of the reasons that you were so careful. I don't know why that hasn't happened more often now, but I suspect it will, Sandy Hook people being a good example of it. Hold deceitful authors accountable though. Complain, praise, comment, name and shame the people that are doing wrong. Get off the couch. Engage, don't have to tell you guys that, but encourage young people also to perform their civic duties. Exercise your rights to let your voice be heard. Pay attention to political candidates for local and state offices. Ask them where they stand on this when they come calling for your vote. So, I've had, as you heard in the introduction, a lot of titles over the years, but my favorite one is my current title, Grandpa. So, in that role, not long ago, I attended a ceremony where our granddaughter became a Brownie Scout. And as these seven-year-olds became Brownies, they promised to practice the Girl Scout Law. I had this image of them fixed in my head where they were all dutifully facing the flag and raising their hands and saying, "I will do my best to be honest and fair, friendly and helpful, considerate and caring, courageous and strong, and responsible for what I say and do, and to respect myself and others, respect authority, use resources wisely, make the world a better place, and be a sister to every Girl Scout." Now, I'm not sure we can expect all our leadership to be like Margaret Chase Smith, but if the political candidates, social media barons, educators, entertainment stars, and cultural icons can only rise to the level of these seven-year-olds, the world would be a much better. So, my diagnosis is that American journalism is not dead. It has had an impact, but it's felt that impact as our sources of news morph into new immature platforms whose practitioners need to rededicate themselves to disciplined ethics and regain the trust of the American people through old-fashioned values of accuracy, fairness, respect, accountability. But in a world of instant, anonymous sources to social media, much of that responsibility for enforcing those values is no longer exclusively for the Lou Grants of the world, it's on all of us. Thank you for listening today, and if you take nothing else from this discussion, always remember this important...
I'm not even saying that.
Thank you for listening.